It's too late now.
They're six feet away. We can get, we can get, unless it's.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the May 20th, 2021 meeting to order. If those of you who want to see can find a seat, we don't have enough. Uh, we have a lot of service awards this evening, so if I could ask everyone to stand for the invocation given by Reverend Pat Harney from the Church Scientology remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you very much. What is greatness? The hardest task one can have is to continue to love his fellows despite all reasons he should not. And the true sign of sanity and greatness is to so continue. For the one who can achieve this, there is abundant hope. For those who cannot, there is only sorrow, hatred, and despair. And these are not the things of which greatness, or sanity, or happiness are made. A primary trap is to succumb to invitations to hate. The real lesson is to learn to love. He who would walk scathless through his days must learn this. Never use what is done to one as a basis for hatred. Never desire revenge. It requires real strength to love man. And to love him despite all invitations to do otherwise, all provocations, and all reasons why one should not. Happiness and strength endure only in the absence of hate. To hate alone is the road to disaster. To love is the road to strength. To love in spite of all is the secret of greatness. And may very well be the greatest secret in this universe. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Harding. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have many service awards tonight. As I call your name, if you could come forward. For 10 years of service, Matthew Jackson from Parks and Recreation. Thank you. Next, for 20 years of service, from the Fire Department, Gregory Newland.
District Commander Greg Newland has over 30 years of experience in fire and EMS services. He joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue in May of 2001 as a firefighter paramedic and has promoted, been promoted through the ranks, where he was promoted to the district commander position in 2017. Chief Newland has performed on several fire department teams, such as the Health and Safety Committee, the Employee Benefits Committee, and currently serves on three separate pension boards. Chief Newland possesses an Associate of Science degree in fire administration. He holds numerous memberships and certifications from around the state in public safety. Chief Newland is also a certified public pension trustee. As district commander for Clearwater Fire and Rescue, he oversees 52 personnel, ensuring a 24-hour management presence while responding to various types of emergency incidents. Greg is married to his beautiful wife Rose and has one son named Justin, who is also a Clearwater firefighter. Thank you for your 20 years of service with the City of Clearwater Fire and Rescue Department. Greg Newland.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Don't forget Nicole. Next, for 20 years of service, from the Fire Department, Anthony Tedesco.
Division Chief Anthony Tedesco oversees the Emergency Medical Services Division. He has over 30 years of experience in fire and EMS services. He joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue in May of 2001 as a firefighter EMT and has since been promoted through the ranks with a strong skill set and experience as a paramedic. He has held positions of lead medic, fire medic lieutenant, fire EMS coordinator, and promoted to the division chief of the EMS, of EMS position in 2017. Chief Tedesco possesses a BSN cum laude and is currently pursuing a master's degree in management, strategy, and leadership through Michigan State University. He is an exceptional trainer and mentor with skills and passion to motivate peak individual performance from our firefighter EMTs and paramedics. As chief, uh, division chief of EMS for Clearwater Fire and Rescue, he oversees the department's EMTs, paramedics, fire medic lieutenants, and a fire EMS officer. The chief has been intricately involved in the countywide EMS service program, where he shares his expertise in medical care and as such receives current medical advice on diseases, health concerns, medical equipment, and training to share with our clinicians. His proactive attitude and positive stance for a healthy workforce has been an asset to the city and department during this pandemic. Tony is married to his lawful partner Leo and has one four-legged, four-legged fur daughter named Angel. Thank you for your 20 years of service with the City of Clearwater Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Tedesco.
Congratulations, Tony. Thanks for your service. We'll see you in a second round.
Thank you very much.
Next, if I could ask Jennifer Pauley from the Fire Department to come forward for 20 years of service.
Lieutenant Jennifer Pauley has over 20 years of experience in fire and EMS services. She joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue in May of 2001 as a firefighter paramedic and has since been promoted through the ranks. She was promoted to the lieutenant position in 2019. Lieutenant Pauley is a member of the technical rescue team. She has received numerous commendations throughout her career and sets the standard for excellence. Lieutenant Pauley possesses a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing and holds various memberships and certifications from around the state in public safety. As a lieutenant for Clearwater Fire and Rescue, she ensures that our personnel are kept safe from harm while responding to the needs of our citizens. Lieutenant Pauley is also an instructor for our organization, teaching individuals the required skills for specialized response teams. Jennifer is married to her handsome husband Rick and has one son. I hope Rick's here. Thank you for your 20 years of service with the City of Clearwater Fire and Rescue Department, Lieutenant Jennifer Pauley.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. You proud of your mother?
Thank you.
Little camera shot? I get it. Next, if I could have Larry Williams from the Fire Department come forward for 25 years of service.
District Commander Larry Williams has over 30 years of experience in fire and EMS services. He joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue in May of 1996 as a firefighter EMT and has been promoted through the ranks. His most recent promotion was to the district commander position in 2016. Chief Williams has performed on the technical rescue team and is currently a member of the department's awards committee and has been the recipient of the motivational mentor award. Chief Williams possesses a Bachelor of Science degree in public safety administration. He has obtained the Blue Card Incident Commander Instructor Certification and holds various memberships and certifications from around the state in public safety. As district commander for Clearwater Fire and Rescue, he oversees 52 personnel, ensuring a 24-hour management presence while responding to various types of emergency incidents. Larry is married to his beautiful wife Michelle and has one daughter and two sons. Thank you for your 25 years of service with the City of Clearwater Fire and Rescue Department. Larry Williams.
Congratulations, Larry. Thank you for your service and leadership. Next, we have Marvin Petten Gill from Fire Department for 25 years of service.
Deputy Chief Marvin Petten Gill is second in command and oversees the operation division. He has over 30 years of experience in fire and EMS services. He joined Clearwater Fire and Rescue in May of 1996 as a firefighter EMT and has been promoted through the ranks and was promoted to the deputy chief position in 2017. Chief Petten Gill has performed on several fire department teams, such as technical rescue and extrication, and served on the apparatus committee for purchasing the fire department's trucks and engines. Chief Petten Gill possesses a Master of Science degree in executive fire service leadership. He has obtained the international designation of chief fire officer and holds various memberships and certifications from around the state in public safety. As deputy chief for Clearwater Fire and Rescue, he oversees the department's EMS, training, and suppression divisions consisting of 182 personnel. His leadership skills define our, our vision, which is to advocate and sustain a leading emergency service organization with a focus on quality, cost effectiveness, and all hazard mitigation that exceeds our customers' expectations. Marvin is married to his beautiful wife Carrie. They all have beautiful wives. And has one daughter. Thank you for your 25 years of service with the City of Clearwater and the Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Petten Gill.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Keep it going.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have our employee of the month for April. If I could have John Savage from the Fire Department come forward.
Engine 51 was dispatched recently for a stabbing, and the engine responded to a staging location due to reports of guns and knives at the location with confirmed injuries called in by the reporting party. Engine 51 proceeded onto the scene and noticed a familiar face holding the patient's arm up above his head. This familiar face belonged to firefighter John Savage, who was off duty doing work at his home close by. The patient was treated by members of Engine 51 and assisted by firefighter Savage. Upon further investigation by Clearwater Police Department, this juvenile was on his way home to his grandparents' home when a SUV full of males pulled up and attempted to inflict great bodily harm on this 16-year-old male. While being struck multiple times in the head and face, the juvenile, unable to, unable to defend himself and adequately against multiple attackers with his bare hands, pulled out a pocket knife. During the fight, the young man nearly amputated his right pinky finger. The assailants were yelling to go back into the car and get the gun. With no regard for his own safety, the unarmed firefighter Savage heard the commotion and immediately rushed to the aid of the young man who was being attacked down the street. Firefighter Savage placed himself between the assailants and the young man and prepared to defend the boy. He heard the yelling about a gun and knew that he had to think fast. The assailants charged firefighter Savage, but he verbally de-escalated the situation, stating that the police were on the way and right around the corner. The males eventually returned to their vehicle and fled the scene. Firefighter Savage was able to accurately describe the vehicle, and Clearwater Police Department located the vehicle and apprehended the individuals. Firefighter Savage, single-handedly saved this young man's life. Firefighter Savage exhibited what can only be described as valor. He showed great courage in the face of danger with no regard for his own safety. He placed this young man's life before his own, and his actions were nothing short of heroic. Firefighter Savage has brought great honor to our department, our city, and profession through his actions this day. He went above and beyond the call of duty at extreme personal risk, having been instrumental in rescuing and saving another's life. Fire and Rescue, John Savage, April 2021, Employee of the Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shouldn't have to be. Next, if I could have Chief Ellers and Chief Tedesco come forward for the EMS Week proclamation for 2021. Chief? Great night for the Fire Department. Whereas rapid access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, now therefore I frankly hereby mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, to hereby proclaim May 16 through the 22nd, 2021 to be Emergency Medical Services Week in Clearwater. I want to thank all of our dedicated employees of all the different departments for all that they do on a daily basis. Uh, I hope that citizens catch you out there doing the right things, which I know you are, and I would ask all of our citizens just to take a moment out of their day and thank these people for keeping them safe on a daily basis and making their quality of life better in the City of Clearwater, the city we all love and call home. So God bless you all. I would ask if there are any amendments to the minutes of the May 6th, 2021 meeting?
The minutes I submitted?
Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed unanimously. At this time, I want to open it up to citizens to be heard. If there are any citizens in the audience that would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda, you can find the agendas back, uh, on my back right towards the exit to the room, and we ask you to come forward and also to sign a, uh, signature card.
Okay. Greetings, council members. I'm Allison Dolan. I'm the president of the Clearwater Historical Society, and today I've brought you two friends.
Your past. And your future.
And we're going to leave the ghost of Charles Dickinson's because people before you now are in flesh and blood. I'm your present, and your note that at present is the renaissance of downtown Clearwater. New jobs, new companies, and new energy and new opportunities. While the museum is not really in downtown, we're close enough. So, and as we are indeed grateful this, this month to be the, the charity of choice from the district. So on Thursday, May 27th, the 11 restaurants that are small business owners will be donating 10% of their proceeds to the museum. Now, I will let you talk to your past.
Well, hello. I'm Sam McClellan. I'm standing in for Robert Whitehurst, who in 1854 owned the property where the museum and cultural center is. So I'm kind of like the ghost of the landlord, and you'll see my life and times, along with fond memories of my friends and my family on the walls and the halls of the Clearwater Historical Society. The artifacts and pictures, pictures tell an amazing story of the founding of our city. And let me tell you, it was blood, sweat, and tears. Emphasis on sweat, because there was no air conditioning until 1901, right? The society's been documenting the add and flow of our community for generations to come. Sure, we made a lot of mistakes, but we did a lot of great things, too. We survived two world wars, the Great Depression, the Spanish Flu pandemic, and the absolute worst decision, prohibition. Ask any Whitehurst. But we came through it all together so well that you and the dais are a testament to what is right. Thomas Monson said, "Let us not only remember the past and its required sacrifice, let us also remember that we are responsible to build a legacy for the generations that follow us." The mission of the Clearwater Historical Society Museum and Cultural Center is to educate, collect, preserve, exhibit, and promote the people, culture, and events of Clearwater's rich past, and I am indeed grateful for their hard work in documenting our progress to where we are today.
Hello. Greetings again. I'm your future you. Seriously, I'm Lucas Persakino, and I'm pretty much a hot commodity. I'm a member of the very generation that Clearwater wants, offering me a lifestyle of working, playing, and living in downtown, especially in the district. While I love the high rises and towers coming out of the ground, I also appreciate the signs of generations before me, the buildings, the decor, the architecture. They are tangible reminders of the hard work, visions, and creativity of the generations who come before me. Their stories show the character and charm which makes Clearwater so unique. It's that character of downtown and the characters in downtown that makes Clearwater so unique. We want to honor and celebrate our past, warts and all. George Santayana said, "Those who do not remember the past are doomed to repeat it." Let's remember our past and the lives well-lived through the Clearwater Historical Society. This month's Dine Out for a Difference allows us to support their great work. Join us next Thursday in the district and make dining out count. As Bob Marley said, "In this bright future, you can't forget your past."
So as I bring you back to the present, I'll leave you the words of Pope John Paul II. "Let us remember the past with gratitude, live with the present with enthusiasm, and look forward to the future with confidence." So at the Clearwater Historical Society Museum and Cultural Center, we try to do that the best we can. All three of the yous, your past, your present, and your future, they all come together at the Clearwater Historical Society Museum. We're only open on Saturdays, but we're doing our best here. So, um, so join us next Thursday and so that we can all have fun. Take care of the district and take care of the museum. I also wanted to tell you why we are doing all the research, that we have decided to have a birthday party that night, because on May 27th of 1915 was the day that the governor signed the City of Clearwater into a city. So it happens to coincide with us. So it works out well. So hope to see you next Thursday.
Well, we look forward to that, and we'll come out for the 106th anniversary of Clearwater next Thursday at the district. And if you don't know where that is, it's downtown on the 4 and 500 block of Cleveland, and the vendors have graciously, uh, decided to give 10% of their revenue to the charity of choice on that last Thursday of the month. So we invite you to come out. I would also tell people to go out to the Historical Society and Museum and see the Women's Expo. This is the second anniversary, and there are just some dynamite ladies. I had the fortune to know several of them. Several of them are still with us, and sadly, some have passed, but I do appreciate the fact that you are remembering their contributions to the City of Clearwater. Anyone else for citizens to be heard?
That was like a perfect segue through what I've got to say. How are you all tonight? Good to see you. Uh, my name is Stuart Berger. I've been a longtime resident of Clearwater. I've been in Clearwater. I can remember Pickles Plus down at the, uh, on the Harborview Center. What I wanted to say tonight was I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you for creating the district. You know, when I moved from Del Oro Groves five years ago to my condo downtown, there was nothing doing down there, and all we wanted was for things that we could walk to, and we've got that now, and I am so thankful. So that is what I'm here tonight to say. Again, thank you. I'll be seeing you Saturday night, um, but I also have two questions. Number one is, are we going to be able to continue having the seats outside in the street now that the restrictions are being lifted for COVID?
We are keeping the street open until the end of the year, at which point we're going to look at traffic patterns when we return to normal, whatever that means. But I think for the most part, you have support from the council, uh, to continue to leave the street on the 4 and 500 block closed for the restaurants. It is the only good thing that has come out of COVID-19.
Seems like it. One other question. When we, uh, build Imagine Clearwater, which I'm greatly looking forward to, are we going to be able to keep it open that way, or is that going to be a, a main avenue towards it?
That's something we're going to study. I hope that we can keep it closed. It's a future discussion that the council will have, but the city manager is already authorized for it to stay closed through the end of the year, at which point, as I said, we'll probably do a six-month traffic study to see if it has any detrimental effect overall, and even if it's just marginally, I think we would continue to keep it open because it's been a smashing success.
It has been. Again, thank you all for that.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizens to be heard? Yes?
I have one email from the Urban Angels Transport. Dear Mayor and City Council, during the Bel Air Bellevue Community Meeting on May 4th, I presented an issue to the committee about the unethical and unprofessionalism of Officer Kevin Vine on May 3rd in the Bel Air Bellevue Community Meeting. The request for the Bel Air Bellevue Community Members to review the body cam footage of Officer Kevin Vine and the two responding backup officers was denied by Lieutenant Johnson and Chief Slaughter. On May 5th, at the Ross Norton Recreational Center, Chief Slaughter met with me and three other members of the Bel Air Bellevue Community Committee. During that meeting, I explained the reason why my complaint was submitted to the city manager's portal for a safe and secure submission, because when a citizen makes a physical appearance to make an Internal Affairs complaint, they are waiting in the Clearwater Police Department lobby for an hour or more. Usually, an officer who is not Office of Professional Standards Internal Affairs is dispatched to the lobby to discuss the complaints with the citizens. To my knowledge, Largo Police Department and Pinellas County Sheriff's Office have a carbon copy Internal Affairs complaint forms from the perjury statue for initiating, initiating, and a section for supporting facts. These forms require notary and signature from the citizens and the Internal Affairs officer. When the citizen has provided a copy of the signed and notarized document of the complaint, Chief Slaughter uses a mail-in letter system to himself and not to the Office of Professional Standards Internal Affairs on such forms mentioned. and not to the Office of Professional Standards Internal Affairs on such forms mentioned. This is on the CPD complaint pamphlet, which has not been revised since 2015, put in the pamphlet six years out of date with the current 2021 amended complaint information and email addresses. After covering these issues with Chief Slaughter and asked about the footage, the chief said, "For 30 seconds while Officer Kevin Vine was confronting the girls, there was no sound during that period." This response by the chief is what brought on the request to have the community members and church leaders review the body cam footage. That's the first step in gaining trust with the communities. On May 6, I attended the meeting agenda with the city council to cover these issues and request that body cam footage and police reform be placed on the agenda before the council with Chief Slaughter present. But Chief Slaughter departed the council chambers during the citizens-to-be-heard regarding items not on the agenda. Clerk Anna was inquiring feedback from Chief Slaughter to help clarify questions about the conflict of the City Code of Ordens and Florida statute, but Chief Slaughter wasn't present. So out of respect to Chief Slaughter's absence, I didn't address the issue to city council. These are issues that the council should not be in the dark about, then brought to the light due to the liability of an unethical or unprofessional employee of our city. Thank you for your time and patience. Thank you for the role you all have taken on for our city. Thank you for all your hard work. God bless you all. Respectfully submitted, Andre Johnson.
Chief, do you want to address us?
Certainly, Chief Slaughter, Dan Slaughter, Chief of Police. So we have shared some information with council already, I believe, on this. It's gone through the city manager's office. The crux of the incident that he references involves an address that we've had calls, a total of 43 calls, from citizens to address problems at this particular address. And the call that day was no different. Officer Vine was dispatched to that location at the request of a neighbor who lives in close proximity to this property about regular drug dealing and congregation that's going on at the property. Upon him arriving, the 30 seconds that he references on the body cameras, if you recall, there's a 30-second buffer. And so when the officer gets out of the car, he's required to turn on the camera. He turns on the camera, the 30 seconds that he's referencing is that 30-second buffer. And because of the oral interception statute, we just don't ever capture the audio from that buffer, just the video. So from that moment, the video shows an interaction between the officer, in which case Mr. Johnson is immediately confrontational and, you know, making statements that he's going to, you know, bring this officer's action to the attention of council and also to the community and basically questioning his purpose for even being there. The officer was dispatched there. He actually offers to show him the screen of the dispatch. So, and Mr. Johnson admits, says, "If you can prove to me that you're here because you were sent here and you're not profiling and all that stuff, then I'll back down." And he does. He backs down for a couple of minutes once he sees that the officer was in fact sent there. This location is a community, is a regular community problem. Mr. Johnson represents himself as a community leader that I'm not sure is representing the community based on the 43 calls for service. I met with him, I called him, I contacted him. Based on the fact that I know he is relatively active with the community group, I wanted to meet with him and talk about how we could partner to try to address these problems. And he really just wanted to hash over the video. And I listened to him, I listened to his complaint. I don't see the video evidence reflecting that. As far as him making requests for the video evidence, the mechanism is for him to go make the public records request. And that's been explained to him, and he's very welcome to have the video with whatever the required redactions would be. You know, I think with regard to the mechanism in which we use complaints, I have a policy that I receive complaints regardless of form. That's my comment, is regardless of form. Back in when I was an internal affairs investigator, law enforcement was criticized sharply for requiring people to do forms. They felt that the forms were a chilling effect and that they made people not want to fill them out. They felt that they should be able to, you know, just give them whatever. So we have regardless of form. You can tell it to a supervisor, you can call it in on the phone, you can send me a letter, you can send me an email. Mr. Johnson is well-versed in our complaint system. He has no problem figuring out how to contact us, as is evidenced by the three different mechanisms in which he complained about this particular incident. He forwarded a complaint to the city manager through the government program. He contacted Officer, or sorry, Lieutenant Johnson with the Office of Professional Standards. It did take him some time to get back to him. With regard to people coming that may not be related to the complaint, the thing we did implement last year as part of the community forum we did on North Greenwood was, you know, we used to receive the complaint and we would kind of assign it to the employee supervisor. And because of shift work, that could be several days. So we discontinued that practice and required a supervisor to get back with them within the same day, in which case Lieutenant Johnson did call and contact him and speak with him that day. I was optimistic that meeting with Mr. Johnson, I would be able to hopefully get us to a position where we could partner and work in cooperation in the community. I'm not sure that I'm optimistic that we can do that moving forward. But I will continue to hold my officers accountable when they do something wrong. This was reviewed by four different people within my organization. I shared my results with the city manager and to the council through the city manager. And I'm more than happy to make the video available to anyone who'd like to watch it.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Anything else, Ms. Clayton?
Any comment was submitted by Elizabeth Davis. "Thank you for creating advisory boards for our city. Residents deserve to be heard, yet it is not easy to comment to advisory boards, much less show up. There are no e-commerce for these meetings. Please change this so we can respond. I would like you to encourage citizen participation by publishing the meeting dates and times on the front page of the website, listing the members and their emails so we could comment to them about our neighborhoods and successes or needs. There is a line of email information, yet it is not filled in. Our advisory boards are unreachable for the most part. This could include the opportunity to talk to our advisory board. When it comes to applying for a board position, please post applications for boards as well as committee member opening dates, using the calendar to teach people. These are the committees with openings coming up this year by month. Would be so transparent for everyone. It seems to expect applications two months out, as you vote one month out for an upcoming vacancy. Publish this information, please. Perhaps the board members should get a summary of residents' My Clearwater requests monthly. It seems as an advisory board member, they should know what staff and residents are resolving each month. We all represent everyone in Clearwater, yet it is not easy to hear each other's voices, joys, or concerns. I hope the website can refresh the advisory committee opportunity for us all. I am certain someone is summarizing all My Clearwater issues for each month and prioritizing. So please make us available to the board members as well. The map is good on the website, but it is a blink in time, not a look at priorities of the neighborhood over time. Thank you for your work."
Thank you. Anyone else for citizens to be heard? Do I have a motion? Are there any consentogen items to be removed, 7.1 through 7.13, by the council or by a citizen?
I move to approve Agenda Item 7.1 through 7.13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 8.1.
Continue to June 17, 2021. Declare three parcels of certain real property in Section 15 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, located at 704 Court Street, 710 Court Street, 701 Franklin Street in Clearwater, Florida, as surplus for the purpose of conveying the three parcels to the Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority in exchange for a parcel owned by the PSTA located at the northwest corner of South Garden Avenue and Pierce Street, Clearwater, Florida, in order to effectuate PSTA's construction of a new multimodal transit facility.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 8.1? Have a motion to continue to June 17?
Motion to continue Agenda Item 8.1 to June 17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 8.2.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low RL and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential LMDR District 41770, St. Corry Drive, and pass ordinances 9448-21, 9449-21, and 9450-21 on first reading. Clayton?
Good evening, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development Department. This property is occupied by a single-family home, and the owners are seeking annexation in order to receive solid waste service only as sewer service is not readily available to this property. The property is eligible for annexation as it's located in an enclave and it is contiguous to city boundaries on the east and west. The property will be designated residential low on the future land use map and zone low-medium density residential. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton? Anyone from the public to speak to item 8.2? Have a motion?
Move that we approve item 8.2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Ms. Aiken?
Ordnance number 9448-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the west side of St. Corry Drive, approximately 985 feet north of State Road 590. This post office address is 1770 St. Corry Drive, Clearwater, Florida 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9448-21 on first reading.
Anyone to speak to this ordinance? Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous.
Ordnance number 9449-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the west side of St. Corry Drive, approximately 985 feet north of State Road 590. This post office address is 1770 St. Corry Drive, Clearwater, Florida 33759. Upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential low RL, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9449-21 on first reading.
Second.
Anyone from the public to speak to this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Ms. Aiken?
Ordnance number 9450-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the west side of St. Corry Drive, approximately 985 feet north of State Road 590. This post office address is 1770 St. Corry Drive, Clearwater, Florida 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium density residential LMDR, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9450-21 on first reading.
Second.
Anyone to speak to this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 8.3.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential urban RU and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential LMDR District 4181, Montclair Road, and pass ordinances 9451-21, 9452-21, and 9453-21 on first reading.
This property is located on the southwest corner of Montclair Road and Seaton Drive, and it's occupied by a single-family home. The owners are requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste services. The property is eligible for annexation as it's located in an enclave and it's contiguous to city boundaries on all four sides. The property will be designated residential urban on the future land use map and zone low-medium density residential. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton? Anyone from the public to speak to item 8.3? Have a motion?
Move to pass item 8.3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Ms. Aiken?
Ordnance number 9451-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the southwest corner of Montclair Road and Seaton Drive, whose post office address is 1881 Montclair Road, Clearwater, Florida 33763, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9451-21 on first reading.
Second.
Anyone from the public to speak to this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous.
Ordnance number 9452-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the southwest corner of Montclair Road and Seaton Drive. Its post office address is 1881 Montclair Road, Clearwater, Florida 33763, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential urban RU, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9452-21 on first reading.
Second.
Anyone to speak to this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous.
Ordnance number 9453-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the southwest corner of Montclair Road and Seaton Drive. Its post office address is 1881 Montclair Road, Clearwater, Florida 33763, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium density residential LMDR, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9453-21 on first reading.
Second.
Anyone to speak to this ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 9.1.
Ordnance number 9461-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a platted 10-foot utility easement located along the north 10 feet of Lot 18 Cedar Heights, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 81, page 85 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9461-21 on second reading.
Second.
Anyone to speak to this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 9.2.
Ordnance number 9462-21, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a platted 5-foot utility easement described as the west 5 feet of Lot 7, Block 69 Mandalay, recorded in Plat Book 14, pages 32 to 35 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt ordinance 9462-21 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 10.1.
Accept a gas utility easement from NRF Pinewood LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of gas utility facilities on real property located at 3860 Tampa Road, Oldsmore, Florida, and adopt resolution 21-13. Mr. Langill?
Good evening, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas. This is a gas utility easement for us to serve a customer in Oldsmore, along Tampa Road. The easement is sufficient to meet our needs, operational needs, to maintain the line for the life of the gas line. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Any questions? Anyone from the public to speak to item 10.1?
Move to approve Agenda Item 10.1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Ms. Aiken?
Resolution number 21-13, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, accepting the utility easement from NRF Pinewood LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city utility facilities, providing an effective date.
Move to adopt resolution 21-13.
Second.
Anyone to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 10.2.
Accept a utility easement from CRP/WP Alta Clearwater Owner LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city utility facilities on a real property located at 19320 US Highway 19 North, and adopt resolution 21-20. Ms. Kivitt?
Thank you, Mr. Horn, and good evening, Mayor and Council, Terra Kivitt Engineering. This utility easement gives the city the rights to maintain its infrastructure on this commercial property. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kivitt? Anyone from the public to speak to this item? Have a motion?
Move we adopt resolution 21-20 on second reading.
On the item for...
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this is not second readings. Move to pass item 10.2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Ms. Aiken?
Resolution number 21-20, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, accepting a utility easement from CRP/WP Alta Clearwater Owner LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city utility facilities, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt resolution 21-20.
Second.
Anyone to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. 10.3.
Authorize the City of Clearwater to join the state of Florida and other local governmental units as a participant in the Florida Memorandum of Understanding and Formal Agreements, implementing a united plan and adopt resolution 21-19.
Counsel, if you will recall, the city is a party to opioid litigation. This is a...
This is a proposed settlement that is proposed by the State of Florida Attorney General's Office involving all the local governments in the state of Florida. There is not currently a final settlement on these cases, but this is the framework which the Attorney General's Office will use to distribute the press with the rest of the state. Any questions? We could kind of talk about this in a little more depth on...
Any questions for Ms. Aiken? Anyone from the public to speak to item 10.3?
I move to approve agenda item 10.3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed unanimous. Ms. Aiken.
Resolution number 21-19, a resolution authorizing the City of Clearwater to join with the State of Florida and other local government units as a participant in the Florida Memorandum of Understanding and Formal Agreements Implementing a Unified Plan.
Move to adopt resolution 21-19.
Second.
Anyone from the public to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed unanimous. 10.4.
Approve an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County to increase the local option fuel tax by 5 cents and adopt resolution 21-24. Mr. Maxwell.
Michael Maxwell, Assistant City Manager. Pinellas County is considering an increase to the levy for the local option fuel tax of 5 cents in an effort to offset a deficiency in the Transportation Trust Fund. Prior to consideration, they are asking the cities within Pinellas County to agree to an interlocal agreement, which they will consider on the 25th of May. As of this morning or early afternoon, St. Petersburg did approve the interlocal along with Largo. That means we are over the 50%. So we will be moving forward with the interlocal, whether or not we support it or not, they will be considering it next week. This is not an increased tip tax. That would be considered in June or July of this year.
Any questions for Mr. Maxwell? Anyone from the public to speak to item 10.4? I have a motion.
Move to approve item 10.4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed unanimous. Ms. Aiken.
Resolution number 21-24, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, approving the interlocal agreement regarding the distribution and utilization of the local option fuel tax that may be levied by Pinellas County, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt resolution 21-24.
Second.
Anyone to speak to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed unanimous. Mr. Horn and I had a discussion with Mr. Delk today, and I want to raise a topic that may catch some of you by surprise, but I think we've all been reading in the paper the incredible increases in cost of commodities, building products and other things. And I have to tell you, I would like to postpone the formal groundbreaking of Imagine on Monday to a date in the future. I would like to get the numbers back from Skanska before we formally do that. I think it is the right order of things, and I know that there's been a lot of work put into this. We have invited many people to the ceremony, but I think we're on the wrong side of the agreement to do the formal groundbreaking, and I wanted to bring it all to you.
So I know, personal experience, commodities, especially lumber, has gone at least 150% over what it used to be, but I heard something today at Home Depot that lumber futures are...
Dropping.
Are dropping. So the discussion I had today was sometime, maybe in six weeks, maybe sometime in the summer, that things would kind of go back to normal again. But my question would be, with Imagine Clearwater, I mean, do we, is it steel is the same? I haven't noticed that steel...
Steel is going up because there's a substitute process going on with steel, so it's been increasing pretty readily as well. There are some projects that have been substituting steel for wood, and so you're starting to see it escalate. I truly believe, from everything that I read and I keep up on these things because of my real job, that, you know, there's always a lag when you have the demand that we've been having for commodities and for building products. And it takes a while for the manufacturers to start to catch up. I believe that they will catch up. You know, when you were selling a sheet of plywood for 35 and now you're selling it for 75, you tend to produce a lot more of it so you can sell it at that higher price. You know, 2x4s were $3 for an 8-foot stick, and now they're 9.
Yeah.
You know, so there is a huge incentive for manufacturers to catch up. You'll also see some projects that probably won't go through until commodities come down. But, you know, I would like to see the GMP from Skanska, and I hope that's not extreme, but at one point we thought that the price might decline because things were slow during the beginning of COVID. In fact, we heard that from the representative at one point. Clearly, that isn't the case today.
Yeah.
As COVID accelerated, people were doing more on their homes. You're still seeing a construction boom. There's numerous cranes just anecdotally out on Clearwater Beach, much less throughout the Tampa Bay area. But I really feel pretty strongly that this is the direction that we ought to go and we ought to wait. And I know that this is very late in the game, and I know there is an inconvenience for our staff, but I wanted to raise the topic with you all.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna ask a question I'm not, it may be wrong in the way I ask it, but is it possible to go ahead and do the groundbreaking, the formal thing Monday morning, but not authorize, you know, just say, you know, the actual construction? We're committed, I think the groundbreaking will show we are committed, but we're also fiscally, we're taking our, you know, the financial information that we have, and I think that we're not going to move forward until we get more certainty as to the commodity pricing. But I think the formal groundbreaking might, you know, shows that we are committed.
Nobody wants to break ground more than I do. I mean, you know, I...
I'm just saying, are we sending the wrong message by doing that?
You know, I mean, I think we can all think about what the message is. I will tell you that, you know, that we kind of share the concern that the mayor is expressing about this issue.
Oh, I share the concern.
And, you know, we've actually been working on that financial kind of picture for you for a few weeks, and ironically, we're scheduled to talk with you all one-on-one about the details of what we found on that and what our proposed solution is. So I think in many respects, we're very close alignment with the issue of this concern. If you choose to delay the groundbreaking, I would point out, however, that that doesn't mean that your project is going to be delayed. You've got two GMPs that are out there now. There's going to be work starting in the next several days. So I think, you know, the contractors anticipating putting up the fencing, and I would expect that there'll be some pretty serious activity going on by the time we get the third and final GMP. So I want to make sure that you all are comfortable about one thing, and that is that you're not delaying the project.
The civil work is going to...
That's right. That work is all going to be, and the public will, it'll be very evident to the public that you're building a park. So I think that just the issue is, if you're comfortable with the, you know, with delaying the groundbreaking, the ceremony, if you will, then, you know, we can adjust. You're not delaying the project. We, I'll tell you where we are today. We have a set amount for the add-backs and the embellishments, restoration of some of the things to the park that you all have said that you wanted, and there's a cost to that, and we've talked a little bit about that, and we're preparing for presenting that to you publicly. I think the big issue for us relates exactly to the issue that the mayor is raising here, and that is, what is the contingency? What do we have to plan for this extraordinary commodities market that we're in the middle of? It's affecting everybody from coast to coast, and we're no different. And it's impossible to predict. Like you, we feel like there's some opportunity for this to kind of mitigate itself over the next several months. There are actually some modestly good things that we're finding, a little bit of cost reductions and things, but it's still very volatile, and so I think there's no, there's no way getting around that. So the big question in our mind is, what do we prepare for in terms of contingency? Now, we've already kind of figured that out on the administration side of the equation, and we're preparing for conversations with you next week on what that looks like. But if you are uncomfortable with that ceremonial event on Monday, then, you know, granted, maybe it's short notice, but we can adjust. That will not delay your park. I mean, that's, that's still a matter up to you if you choose not to, you know, and right now, I don't think anybody's, we're fully going to move forward the park because it's under construction. It's just a matter of that ceremony, and we want you to be comfortable and proud and confident in that when you have it.
Councilmember Backner.
That's kind of what I was going to ask. I mean, you're fine, because we had a long conversation today anyway, but so the infrastructure, Duke and all that stuff will still continue? They're, they're working on the underground?
Yes.
All that stuff?
It's, it's...
That's fine.
It's all going forward.
So then would the symbolic groundbreaking coincide with when we get the gross maximum price in June or July? Is that what you're thinking?
It's probably going to be July or August.
July or August.
And Tara can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you know, I'm betting the way this has been going, I would bet on August, probably, frankly, because of the volatility issue if nothing else.
So once we sign on the contract with the details...
Right, but there'll be a lot of work happening between now and then.
I think that's fine.
I'm not thrilled with any thought of a delay, but as long as we're continuing, moving forward, I'll go along with this, and hopefully, we'll see those prices come down.
Well, we hope so. I mean, there's another topic down the road I'd like to discuss about that, but not tonight.
Does this affect, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This is going to affect our decisions with the two developers who put in bids for the three left properties.
I don't think so. I don't think it, as everybody has said, it doesn't delay the finished product. First of all, what they've shown us are purely sketches of what they envisioned. If we were to approve either one of those developers, the construction drawings and the approval process and everything else, Imagine Clearwater will be more than half-done, maybe complete, before they would be ready to break ground. Would you agree with that process?
That will long be, this issue will long be settled by the time anything comes to fruition with those, and that's assuming a really successful outcome, which I'm optimistic for, so...
I don't want anyone to misconstrue this. I fully support completing Imagine Clearwater, but I do believe in the proper sequencing of the plans. And, you know, I wish I had spoken up sooner about that, but it's really been nagging me, and today, when the city manager and I spoke and we pulled in Mr. Delk, you know, we had a very long fruitful discussion.
Well, I, I agree with you. I hate to see the brakes go on this, but it sounds like it's not, it's going to be moving forward. I've thought about some of my other projects about doing back the same thing, so it's nothing that everybody else hasn't considered, and I think that's probably fiscally prudent right now. If we can wait, and it's a short period, a month or two, and see what happens with the pricing coming down, that nobody could really blame us for that. I think it's a good, it's probably a good thing to do, so I'm fine with it.
I'm fine. I was just, I just asked a question.
No, that's fine.
I'm fine with that.
So I'm hearing consensus?
Yeah.
Joel, I know you hate me. Will it be the last time? I want to thank Mrs. Stowe and this call for all the work that they have done. I will personally call some of the people to tell them, okay? Because I don't want inconvenience people, including our staff, but I appreciate the support on that. Anything else, Mr. Horn?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Aiken?
Yes, sir.
Closing comments? Why don't we start to my right tonight? Vice Mayor?
Got Memorial Day weekend, which traditionally is seen as the beginning of summer, so everybody, you know, be careful over the holiday and, you know, get ready to put those shorts on and banding suits and enjoy the hot weather because it's going to be with us for a while.
Okay, well, I joined local officials and PSA board members yesterday in Dunedin to launch Ava in her new home in Dunedin. She's proudly recognized as Pinellas County's first autonomous vehicle, and coming from a successful deployment in St. Pete the last five months, she's had over 5,000 riders. So now she's in Dunedin. She'll be there through the summer, and then we get her in September on Clearwater Beach. I would say that everybody of, anybody of all ages can go over and ride her. It's, it's an experience that if you haven't ever been in an autonomous vehicle, this might be your chance to do that. The operation days are Wednesday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and it's going to start out running to the stadium, and then later after the baseball is going to be down on Main Street, so you might want to check it out before it comes to Clearwater.
To be politically correct, why is it a she?
Well, Ava is, is, it's, yeah. It's called Ava, and it's called, it's called the Autonomous Vehicle Advantage. That's the name. So they've, I don't know, just like any kind of, I don't know, is that wrong in today's? Just let it drop. You can't win on that one.
He's messing with you.
In the immortal words of Frozen, let it go.
Exactly.
Councilmember Backner.
I just wanted to, I made a couple of notes of some important meetings coming up. So at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, we'll hold a special work session meeting, and I apologize if you're going to go over this, but to have our first discussion of the candidates for city manager. And on Wednesday at 1:00, we'll have our first work session meeting on updating our strategic plan, which I think is very significant, and I would encourage people to take a look at our strategic plan, which is available on our website. And then I'm going to, oh, and while you're at it, if you're there, you might want to check out our environmental sustainability plan green print, because we'll be updating that in the early months of the summer. And also, on Tuesday, June 1st, we have a special work session, what we, on our work session, we're scheduled to discuss the election format, which is very important to me, that meeting as well. And finally, this Saturday, I'll be hosting a meet and greet at Clearwater, Clearwater's Countryside Library outside, and I make cookies, and I have copies of my newsletter and the strategic plan in green print and, and other city documents that you might find helpful. So 10 to 11:30 on Saturday.
Councilmember Backner.
I thought I'd bookend this meeting since we started out with Pat Harney from the Scientology Enterprise giving our invocation. She talked a lot about hate, people who hate, and she spent a lot of time locking eyes with me, I couldn't help but notice. And I just wanted to assure everyone, I don't hate Scientologists, not at all, not even Pat Harney. But with the lofty words she read from L. Ron Hubbard about hate... But with the lofty words she read from L. Ron Hubbard about hate, I think it's also important to understand that this is the same man, L. Ron Hubbard, who wrote the Fair Game Policy, which says, "An SP may be deprived of property or injured by any means by any Scientologist without any discipline of the Scientologist, may be tricked, sued, or lied to, or destroyed." And an SP would be someone like me who has said something critical about Scientology. So that is the real L. Ron Hubbard policy on hate, and I just thought I'd get that into the record. Thank you.
Well, we want to welcome The Rock House, which opened on Clearwater Beach on May 7th, and Councilmember Beckman and myself had the opportunity to go cut that ribbon. It is by the same people that started the hard rock restaurants around the world, and so we are the first. They want to replicate it, so we welcome them. Hope they turn the music down by 11. The Clearwater Historical Society is... We saw this evening they came, and they have opened their second annual Women's Expo. I would definitely tell you to go see that. There really are some spectacular women that made a real difference in Clearwater, and I just... Willa Carson is one of them. I always remember meeting with Willa, who we could never refuse. She did so much for the community. I want to thank our own CPD and the Sheriff's Office for having a fallen officer's ceremony last week. They were both very poignant, and I appreciate all the work that went into that. We are going to have a wine walk downtown this coming Saturday, so come out and join us for that. And next Thursday, as you also heard, you can come and dine in the district, and 10% of the proceeds will go to the Historical Society, and along with that, you can celebrate the 106th year of Clearwater. We are also going to have food truck Wednesday on May 26th. We're going to have gourmet crepes, Kicken Caribbean, and the Sun Kiss. This is all going to be over at the old City Hall parking lot from 11:00 to 2:00. As you already heard, if you were coming to the groundbreaking for Imagine Clearwater, we're going to postpone that for a bit, and we will get that information out to you. The City of Clearwater's Community Redevelopment Agency has adopted three new business assistance grant programs for commercial property owners and tenants. The three grant programs are focused on reducing light and filling vacant ground floor commercial spaces with uses that generate pedestrian activity within the entirety of the CRA District. Once approved, applicants will have between six months and one year to implement interior and exterior renovations. For more information and to apply, visit downtownclearwater.com. The City of Clearwater is seeking to assist residents who are behind on their mortgage and utility payments due to COVID-19. Through a partnership with the Sun Coast Housing Connection, the City of Clearwater will begin accepting applications for the Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program. To apply for assistance, visit myclearwater.com/mortgageassistance or suncoasthousingconnections.org. The City Council will hold a special council meeting, May 24th at 11:00 a.m. to review the candidates for the city manager position. We received a list of 10 top candidates from the recruitment firm, and we will hopefully be narrowing that list to five. The plan is for those five to come to town in June for in-person interviews and meetings which will be held with the community at 5:30 Wednesday, June 15th, at Ruth Eckert Hall. This is an important position for the city, and we encourage you to be part of the selection process. Strategic planning, we are going to start our community strategic planning sessions, and we will start it with a special council meeting, May 21st at 1:00 p.m. to review the city's strategic direction and upcoming strategic planning process. Memorial Day is coming up on May 31st. The city will be closed. Trash and recycling services will not be affected. Clearwater Memorial Day Ceremony in honor of the veterans and our military lives lost will be at 6:30 p.m. Monday, May 31st at the Florida Veterans Memorial Plaza at Crest Lake Park, 201 South Quinwood Avenue. The public is invited and encouraged to attend, and that is a beautiful Crest Lake Park. Because of the Monday holiday, our next work session will be on Tuesday, June 1st at 9:00 a.m. Come join Market Marie. Mark your calendars. There will be a great Market Marie in downtown in May. The next one will be Saturday, June 12th, in downtown Clearwater from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The market is located at 710 Court Street at the corner of Court and Myrtle, and it features a variety of local vendors. Summer camps. The City of Clearwater is looking for outgoing enthusiastic, creative, and responsible people to become camp counselors at the city's summer camps. To apply, inquire at, or call the recreation center of your choice. And the water maintenance program, now through June 5th. The method of water treatment, you may have noticed this when you showered today, used by Pinellas County Utilities and Clearwater Public Utilities is being temporarily modified, now through June 5th. During the short-term change from chloramines to chlorine disinfection, it is common for customers to experience changes in taste and odor. The water is perfectly safe to drink and meets all federal and state standards for water quality. Thank you all for hanging in there. Pretty short meeting. We appreciate you participating. With that, we're adjourned. God bless.